First off, the roll call show that all members of President accounted for except for Councilman Spodovski who is excused. Now, if you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, slight rearrange of the agenda tonight. Considering the results of the most recent election, it's evident that the subject of 6.01 should really be considered by the next council. So unless there's any objection, that will be moved to the first meeting in January. Any objection from the council? Okay. 6.01, 6.01 is the downtown.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so with that, moving on to proclamations and presentations. Confirmation of the reappointment of James Doggett to the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Trustees. So do we need a motion for that? Okay, does have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is Mr. Doggett here tonight? Good heavens. I mean, what a dedicated public servant you are. How many years have you been working with the mosquito abatement?
Since 1977.
Wow, 41 years.
That deserves.
That's amazing, yes.
And today is my birthday.
Well, he beat Randy Werner by a year, yeah. Randy worked for more for 40 years, so you got him beat. Well, that's great. Thank you ever so much for your dedication. Do we swear him in again? Or do we just? He's still sworn in, so he's just got this continuous line. Well, thank you very much, greatly appreciate your continued service. Keep up the great work. Pardon me? Oh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Doggett. And now, by the most amazing coincidence, we have a presentation by the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District.
I'm the CEO. Like I say, I've been on the board for a long time. Ryan Klosnitzer is our latest manager, the fifth one that I've worked with, and he's really great. And he's going to give a presentation on what it is we're doing at this time. Ryan?
Thank you very much, and thanks for having me this evening. Again, your guys are very well represented in Mr. Doggett. He's a very valuable addition to our board. All the policies we have are, has had, he's been working on that, the policy manual for many years, and has been a president and a very strong leader on our board. So I appreciate working with him and the rest of our board. So again, I'll just brief. I know you have a longer agenda today, so I'll keep this brief, but I thought I'd like one update on what we're doing in Alameda County in regard to mosquitoes. So quickly, I'll just give an overview of our organization, who we are, a little biology lesson in there, where mosquitoes breed, what we do to control those mosquitoes, diseases that are spread by mosquitoes, and specifically some of where we find that here in Livermore, specifically. I'm joined tonight by our vector biologist, Mr. Tom McMahon, who is the, you'll see in the streets of Livermore, he covers this area. Anytime you have a call for service or you see a mosquito truck driving around, it's probably Tom driving around here. So he's been out here for quite a while, and he knows this area quite well. So we've been around since 1930. We're an independent special district. We serve all cities and incorporated areas of the county, except for the city of Albany. And we have a trustee represented from every city. The county is represented by the egg commissioner. We have three sources of revenues, which contribute to almost $4 million. We have Valorium Special Tax and Benefit Assessment, we've had since 2008. We haven't raised it. It's a COLA, but our board has been very good with money, and we've been very prudent in our expenses. With that, we have fully funded retiree health benefits. We treat our employees well. They retire usually with the district. Our pension is funded well. It's CalPERS, so we kind of roll with it, and we're debt-free. With, we only have 16 staff, six seasonal staff fluctuate in the summer when we have a lot of catch basin work, which I'll touch on. We have an aquaculture program. We grow mosquito fish, which we use to treat ponds and swimming pools and whatnot. And we test, we have a fully capable molecular laboratory where we test mosquitoes in animals, birds for diseases. And just recently, we've received a district transparency certificate of excellence from the Special District Association. So we're going to go over some mosquitoes quick, for those who don't know. Mosquitoes need water to live. You can't find mosquitoes unless you have water. You can have stagnant water, clear water, it doesn't really matter, it just needs to be standing water, still water for a couple of weeks. They have a complete metamorphosis, similar to a butterfly, really. So you have an egg, you have a larva, you have a cocoon or pupa, and they emerge into adults. They need blood to survive. Females bite the blood, then that forms the eggs. They bite humans, but some mosquitoes don't even bother humans, they just go for birds, and we just happen to be in the way. Horses as well are susceptible to mosquitoes. They lay their eggs on water. As you see on the left, there's like, almost like a raft. Each individual of those are eggs that lay on the raft. You see them on the water, you'll see a lot of rafts floating of mosquitoes, or individual eggs will be laid in the water as well. They, again, take a couple of weeks to grow, depending on the weather, and they have a siphon to breathe. They need, think of it like a snorkel. So if you're snorkeling in the ocean, if waves hit you, you can't breathe, so that's why fountains that have running water, we don't really care about too much, but if it's stagnant, then they can breathe. So it'd also be how we control mosquitoes sometimes is we put a film of oil, like minimal oil, on the water, and they suffocate. They can't breathe through their tube, and that's a way to control it. How we check for mosquitoes is our technician or field operations supervisor looking. It's a, just a cup on a stick, really. You dip it in the water, you look in there, and on the right, you'll see the little larva. And we see, oh, there's mosquito larvae. And here, we can tell what species they are and what we should do next. There's the jeep you'll see on the left, you'll see drive around in the summertime, doing these catch basins. Catch basins are one of the main sources in Alameda County for mosquito breeding. They hold water just long enough sometimes that mosquitoes will come out of it. And the mosquitoes that live in those storm drains are the type of mosquitoes that do spread West Nile virus and other diseases. You also see in the marshlands, which is more bayside, us treating there with this all-terrain vehicle, treating for high tides and floodwater mosquitoes that hatch in the winter or summertime. And they'll treat a larva sighting, which I'll go over what products we use. We also use fish, as I mentioned. We have these little mosquito fish, we grow them in our facility, and we deliver them throughout Alameda County for free. We have, every year, we fly over the county, and we see all these abandoned pools, about 1,000 every year, that we see green pools, as we call them. And we get all these printed maps, and we go out to, throughout the county, and visit them, knock on the door, say, hey, we noticed you have a pool in your backyard, can we give you some fish? Or, what are you going to do with this pool? Are you going to restart the pool again? Are you going to put chlorine in it? Are you going to treat it? Whatever, we don't finish that until we've cleared that pool. I think you probably did a few hundred in Livermore this year, is that right? Yeah. So that's our summertime activities, finding these pools. But again, we'll use fish if possible, because it's, they can maintain. Sometimes fish will live in a swimming pool for years, and we don't have to go back to it every time. But if you do get fish from us, you can come by, we'll deliver them to you, or you can come by our office. We ask not to put them in natural sources, because they can't compete with local critters. So it's best to just keep them in a contained, like swimming pool, pond, something of that nature. Here's our lab, which I mentioned, we do test. So there's mosquitoes everywhere. We only have six to 10 technicians at any time in the field, so how can we focus our attention? It's really based off where the diseases are. If we find a bird that falls out of the ground, out of the sky, onto the ground, and we test it, we find all that has West Nile virus, then we'll focus our attention on that area. And we test the bird here in the lab. We'll also test mosquitoes. We'll capture mosquitoes using dry ice. Dry ice mimics someone breathing CO2. It's like someone's staying out there breathing. We collect those mosquitoes, we go back to the lab with a QPCR machine, and we test to see, does this mosquito have West Nile virus that could be transmitted to humans? If it does, we'll focus our attention in that area. So here's a short list of mosquito-borne diseases. We have West Nile virus, western equine encephalitis in St. Louis, encephalitis, dog heartworm is spread by a mosquito found in tree holes, and malaria, which is a nauphale mosquito. Other mosquitoes, other diseases that are found in California, they're not some spread yet in California, is Zika, dengue, chicken gunia, and yellow fever. So the common mosquito you see on your left, the house mosquito, those are the ones you usually see in dusk and dawn, the one that come in your house, bother you in the evening time. Again, if you ever get those calls, call us. You know, that's our main focus in the summer, is the house mosquito, the culixpippians. On the right's another species as well. And just to show you the comparison, is, they look, they look very similar when you're holding them, but we actually look under a microscope, and you can see the difference is just the white band on their proboscis, their nose. And then we know, okay, if it's the left mosquito, it usually likes a little dirtier water, so we can focus on where's some dirty water around here. If it's the right, it's a little more cleaner water. So then, based on the species, we know where to find the actual source of the mosquito. So again, West Nile virus is really a bird disease, they just happen to bite humans. So it goes between bird and mosquito, bird and mosquito, and then it transmits to humans when those infected mosquitoes bite us. So we try to cut off that transmission cycle. And horses are affected quite a bit as well. It spread pretty rapidly. Came here in 2005, took six years to come from New York City, and it's endemic now. It's something we deal with every year. You should receive press releases if we do have activity in your area, birds, dead birds found, or mosquitoes, we will send it to your city and let you know. By the way, we're out here treating for this disease. If you're curious what we actually do, we do have a response plan on our website. It just shows, again, what I've mentioned before, that we test the birds, how our, what our surveillance tactic is, and our intensified treatments, and again, the notifications through social media or traditional public outreach. So Zika, I thought it'd be appropriate to speak about that. I'm sure a lot of you have wondered about what we're doing with Zika virus. We don't have the mosquito that spreads Zika virus, so that's one big thing to not worry about. But we are constantly looking for it. We have hundreds of traps throughout the county, looking for this mosquito. You can't get Zika through mosquito unless you have these two species. There's over 20 species of mosquitoes, but only these two are shown to actually spread the disease. So it's Aedes aegypti, Aedes aegypti. Zika is also spread in, by blood transfusions or sexually transmitted, but from a mosquito standpoint, is what we focus on. These are the only two mosquitoes we have. If you guys are curious, Zika's known after a forest in Uganda. Before 2007, we always heard about what this disease was, but it was a very mild symptoms. It just has a rash, and, you know, it makes you feel kind of lousy. But then, with the, in 2015, with the connection with the microcephaly, that's where it kind of rose to some prominence in the public health prevention world. And now, it's a major focus of all mosquito districts. Again, as I mentioned, it's either the mosquito, that species of mosquito will bite an infected human and spread it to another human, like malaria is a similar thing. It's not a bird disease, it's a human disease. So you need a human infected with Zika to spread. And also pregnancy, sex, or blood transfusion. This is about a month old map now, a few weeks old, showing all the cases. So we have Zika throughout California, we just don't have the mosquitoes that spread it necessarily. Southern California has the mosquitoes, but there has been no transmission from mosquitoes. It's all been imported overseas. The only place in America, continental U.S., is South Florida, Miami area, I'm sure you've heard, where the mosquitoes are actually infected with Zika and are spreading it via mosquito. You know, common things about preventing from mosquitoes, you know, call us if you're getting bitten by mosquitoes, we'll be out there within a day, day or two. Right, I won't give too much pressure, but at least two days to get out here to find out what's going on. But screens is really what prevents having mosquito problems like they do. Our southern borders, they don't have this type of climate control, you know, bed nets. And then standing water is really what it's all about. When talking to our partners in Southern California, Central Valley, the hardest thing is these are in backyards, just people's backyards, and they can dry, the egg can lay dormant for a year. So you really have to go in everyone's backyard and scrub their backyards and clean their backyards. It's not just dumping water, it's actually cleaning people's backyards. And then you come back two weeks later, and it's just right back again. A lot of it is the flower pot holders, containers, that holds the water. So it's pretty labor intensive. So we have a reserve fund for it, if it ever does happen in this area. We do have a plan, which is here. It's going door-to-door. We find a, we find this mosquito somewhere, we'll intensify, go door-to-door in everyone's house, and go in everyone's backyard, and find this mosquito and eradicate it. Expanding surveillance, right now, again, we have about 100 of the traps that are focused on this type of mosquito. You know, you can have them everywhere, but we also have them focused in nurseries, because we've seen possibly being ported by pots coming from elsewhere. So we have them at, you know, the Home Depots, and also just nurseries and throughout the county. We have them at the airport, and we also have them at the Port of Oakland. We're also letting people know, there's going to be a California Public Health Outreach Campaign this winter, you'll see, just letting people know to dump and drain, dump and drain, typical thing, don't have standing water in your backyard. And call, these mosquitoes bite during the day, which is kind of different than you're used to. There are other species, local species, that bite during the day, but if you ever get bitten during the day, mosquitoes, let us know, because we'll find out if it's actually this mosquito that's been introduced. We also will have to partner with local groups. We have 16 full-time staff, 23 in the summer, but when we're going door-to-door in the neighborhood, we're in need of a few more people. So we get some volunteer groups. CERT is a volunteer group that we'd ask them to come help us go door-to-door, pass out flyers, clean people's backyards, really. And some common sources, I asked Tom for a list, what we have, what he checks a lot, and I don't know what your terms are, we have terms for all these sources, we've had for years, but the wastewater treatment facility, we got some sources up in Springtown, the creeks and channels, when they slow down, when they're stagnant for a while, we do spend some time out there. The parks, a few years ago, we had some problems. Two years ago, we actually had to do a fogging, adult aciding, in these parks. That was our second time in 30 years we fogged. We don't fog very often in Alameda County, but we had to do it there. Sycamore Grove, Tom spent some time out there. The gravel pits, of course, has some standing water. And again, the swimming pools and the catch basins. So that's all I have, but I'm here for questions for anything. Again, my name is Ryan Klosnitzer, represented by your appointed trustee, Mr. James Doggett, and Mr. Tom McMahon is your vector biologist. So feel free to email us, our website's easy to remember, mosquitoes.org. And akmad@mosquitoes.org is my email, you can always contact me that way as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions?
Just a quick comment. There are a few people on Nextdoor saying that they think they have mosquitoes in their swimming pool. Is there a way we can send out through Nextdoor, push out information on how to get the fish and what, or at least just a link to their website? Thank you.
Yeah.
With Zika, is, are humans the only host for Zika?
I believe, it's a primate disease, so it's still unknown. So there is, primates are infected, but I think they're looking to see if, if birds can hold it yet. There's still a lot of research. We're working with the UC system, with research to find out if that is a reserve host as well, rather than to the humans. But right now, we know it's a human host, that's what we're really focusing our attention on.
Okay, yeah, back in a previous job, I used to do a lot of work with Chironomeidae jejuni, the non-biting midge, but just like mosquitoes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, great, well, thank you very much. Keep up the great work. Mr. Doggett, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither take action nor deliberate on any item brought up during the Citizens Forum, but I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We've got a little better than half dozen cards. Bill Pedrini, Dave Wetmore, David McQuiggin. Mr. Pedrini.
Hi, my name is Bill Pedrini. My wife and I, two months ago, sold our house in San Mateo, and we bought a house here in Livermore.
Welcome.
And the biggest reason that we moved, where we worked and lived the entire adult life in the peninsula, was the unbridled construction up and down the peninsula, which has clogged the roads, made us a prisoner in our house from, until 10:00 a.m. in the morning. We had to be back home by 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon, because of all the ensuing traffic, noise, and pollution. So moving here to Livermore to get away from that, and so far, we've seen nothing but kindness and professionalism from our neighbors and the city staff. Attended the state of the city by the mayor, found it very informative. We've been really happy with our choice. It seems like the current direction of the city has taken, just ensures that we made the right decision, absent the mosquito presentation, that is. But very happy with our choice, very happy being a San Francisco kid, living on the peninsula and moving to Livermore, couldn't be more pleased with our decision.
And there was, there was no but. Mr. Pedrini, thank you very much, and welcome to Livermore. It really is a remarkable community. Dave Wetmore, David McQuiggin, Michaela Toskas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff, guests of the audience. You'll be two-for-two on nice things being said right off the bat here tonight. I'm with Little League Baseball, and as the director of the Little League Intermediate World Series, which is hosted in your city, I wanted to hand out some items to you that were a news release, put out this weekend. At Little League Baseball's international headquarters in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, the International Board of Directors met this past weekend, a number of business items. And the main item that was of concern to ourselves, and we, we had no concerns, because we knew it was going to be a positive result, was the announcement of the 2017 dates and sites by the Board of Directors. For the fifth year, out of five years, the Intermediate League 50-70 Baseball World Series will be held at Max Bear Park from July 30th to August 6th, 2017. Teams will be arriving on Friday, July 28th, into SFO, and we believe this year, we're going to go from five international teams to a sixth international team. And right now, that is being tossed around in regards to whether it'll be Mexico, or possibly a team from Japan. So I just wanted to come to you with great news. We're thrilled to death, we've taken about six weeks off, now we'll gather our committee. We'll, once we get our logo, we'll start sending out our sales and marketing items, as we try to raise a couple hundred thousand dollars every year to continually make the park better. But once again, we're thrilled, we're excited. Year five should be nothing but a great time for the visitors. We've had about 150,000 people come through the city in the first four years. And last year, we were viewed in 146 countries on our livestream. So we're looking forward to working with staff in regards to some capital improvements and other needs that we need. And we can't say thank you enough for the council and the staff support of our event. It could not take place without a team effort. So thank you very much.
Great, and it's a great effort. Thank you for all the work that you folks do, and of course, LARPD is a huge supporter on this, and the fact that we can all come together as the community and have this wonderful event. I think last year, we had 40,000 people come into the Max Bear Park and just enjoy some great baseball. Great, looking forward to it.
Thank you. See you against him.
Thanks, Dave. Dave McQuiggin, Michaela Toskas, Adam Pine.
Dave McQuiggin, Ontario Drive. Evidently, the mayor here is a little confused about what I'm trying to accomplish with what I've been talking about. So let me break it down into basically three areas. First and foremost is, I'm trying to inform, because like many of you, I believe, I used to believe the police were honest and, you know, could trust them in their testimony. Unfortunately, my own personal experiences has led me to the conclusion that they're really nothing more than schoolyard bullies who have found a socially acceptable way to have their dominion over people, and care little about the truth, and even less than the law that they've sworn to uphold, because they're flatly willing to violate it. The second thing I was trying to accomplish, if you understand how the unfounded accusations are treated, they go into a special little file cabinet, not associated with the person that they're really supposed to be against, so nobody gets to see them, you know, making them essentially private. My, my second goal was to make sure that my complaint was not to be made private, but to make sure that everybody could understand what exactly happened to me, so that information and formation, or discussion can occur. We can't discuss problems unless we have a shared understanding of some of the issues that have occurred. This is one that's been very painful to me, and one I've taken a lot of time and effort to try to make sure that I provide the details to, because that comes to the third point. You see, when I want to challenge the findings of the chief's determination that my complaint is unfounded, I really can't, because I'm not allowed to see the actual results of his investigation. They're private. I think I've tried to make a pretty good case of why I believe what occurred to me is not proper police procedure, that the officer did indeed commit deliberate perjury, there has been withholding of evidence, probable destruction of evidence, I know manipulation of evidence. All of these facts I presented, and I can't challenge the findings of the chief, because I can't see his report. Now, given that there were eight other unfounded complaints made against the police, all of which go to this special little file cabinet in the back of the chief's office called Trashcan, because they don't get associated with things, I'm asking that this council request the chief release my report to me, so that I can challenge his assertions directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quiggin. Michaela Toskas, Adam Pine, John Stein.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Michaela Toskas. I am the president and founder of Higher Elevation Community Collective. Since you have passed the zoning ordinance for dispensaries, we have aggressively searching for a property in every section possible. Since the I-3 zoning is for heavy industrial, we, we do need substantial amount of time to prepare a building before we are able to open up for operation. We have contacted every single broker that has spaces for lease in the area. Because the industrial market is in the I-3 area, it's booming, it's a booming, for, with landlords that are not open to having business there. The majority of the parcels available in our zone are owned by firms that are not open to use either. We have found a suitable property about 900 feet from the freeway. It is not in visible range. We are asking for 100-foot variance for the imposed 1,000-foot buffer ordinance, so we can pursue this property. And then I also prepared kind of a list of all the people we've talked to, all the brokers. They own about, I think, 80 to 90% of the industrial properties in the I-3, just different companies. And then I also put together just our contact information and everything for you guys. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can give that to the city clerk. Adam Pine, John Stein, and Connie Cops.
Good evening, council, staff, honorable mayor. My name is Adam Pine, I'm the director of the Floral Elements. We are a farm-to-patient medical cannabis collective. In a recent meeting, the council asked staff to look into the possible regulatory structures for a potential dispensary in Livermore. I think it goes without saying, I believe this is a genuine and worthwhile endeavor. I'm also not naive to the fact that this presents a variety of complicated issues to be weighed and determined. Furthermore, I can imagine having to sort through what I know will be a long list of interested parties to be equally daunting. I've spent the better part of my working adult life creating a knowledge base that centers on interpreting and implementing medical cannabis law, both in theory and in practice with my own business. I've developed a methodology that I believe not only provides access for the local patient base, but one that seeks to respect and maintain the standards and livability of the community. Again, I would like to offer my services in any way whatsoever that might be beneficial to the council, staff, to help streamline this process and come up with the best possible plan for bringing this medicine to Livermore. Thank you very much. I brought some cards, just in case if anyone would like to get in touch.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Pine.
You bet.
John Stein, Connie Cops.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. At the last meeting, I asked where a car wash, a self-service car wash, might be located. I sort of received the generic answer, there's commercial and industrial property in the city, and the staff would work with the owners. I'm concerned that there are a number of auto-related businesses in the downtown that will slowly be forced out of the downtown, and I use a lot of them. I use the car wash during the drought, I get my car inspected downtown, I get maintenance done on my cars. And at present, I'm wondering where those businesses will relocate. I mean, it's good to say that there's commercial and industrial property, but if it's behind the airport or out at Greenville Road, I don't think the businesses will succeed. So I would urge that as we increase in population, and as autos-related businesses and other businesses have to relocate. businesses have to relocate, construction, plumbers, electricians have to relocate, that there be sites within the city that are convenient for the residents to use. And would like further information with more specificity as to where those sites might be. I also brought up the issue of street trees, and I would urge that you not wait till spring. It doesn't matter whether this year is dry or not, we will have more dry years. And it's much better to plant a tree in January or February than it is in April or May. It has a much better chance of survival if it can develop a root system before the hot weather. So, I would urge that the city look into planting trees now rather than waiting till spring. Finally, I'd like to thank councilmember Gary and Turner for their service to the community and hope that they continue in the future. I'm a prime example. There is life after the city council. You will find you have a lot more time because you don't have to wade through 1,000 pages of boilerplate to extract nuggets of information. You don't have to attend an infinite number of meetings, many of them very dull. And I urge that you remain involved in issues like homelessness and an integrated plan for infill. I walked a lot of blocks, and many people are not happy with the current designs and types of development. It seems like the developers prefer to build single-family houses on smaller and smaller lots, and peaked roofs and vestigial porches don't really cut it. The next step will be a four-story house, 2,000 square feet on a 1,000-square-foot lot with two-foot setbacks. So, I urge that you look at other design objectives and ways of doing it, more stacked flats and sixplexes and other ways of doing it that provide the density with better design. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Connie Cops, and I have two cards, no name, no address, and no number, but it's regarding Blue Bell. So, if anybody wanted to speak on that issue... Okay. So, Ms. Cops?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your service, Stu and Loreen. I hope that you are on the other side as well, and that you do have some time to maybe even do a little homework on Springtown. It's complicated. One of the things that I really want to bring up, a couple meetings, two meetings, I asked, where did this map come from? And at one time, it was told a deed, and the other, at the end of the other meeting, it was a title report. And I want to get all the different transactions on the purchase of all the golf course stuff, and I want to know where this map came from. It's very important to me, because this was considered a map of record. And I did, in a public records request, ask for official map, and I was not given that. So, that's really important to me. Please do more homework on Springtown, so we do not pay a consultant to do our work. I think we have staff that should do as much as possible before the lead agency, the people they pick do this, because it's really important that we don't spend a lot of money on consultants when we can do that work ourselves. And then, the park, as a lead agency, sometimes I wonder if there might be a conflict of interest. There's been so many people that have been on council, on the park district, on city planning, running the show at TV 30. Your interview with TV 30 said a lot of things about Springtowns that I think have been disputed. So, I know you said that there was a lot of money going to like, there are a lot of different things. And I really want to fact-check everything we say about Springtown. It's important to me. The other thing, and it's important to our community as well, the other thing I really kind of wanted to bring up was Steven Spadowski, someone might be saying that he's him, talking on Nextdoor.com. There are some things going on with that that are really important to decipher. But, just so you have an outline of the things that really are important, I did write them out, but I think we really, really, really need to go over everything that was said and fact-check, especially that December 7th meeting. A lot was brought up at the December 7th meeting that is inaccurate to our own records. And so, we really need to fact-check, do as much as we can. And I, at the last park district meeting, they said they were going to reach out to stakeholders in November and December. Who do they mean by that? And they said they would use some online, on the website, and other sources. What other sources? We need to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. And I was just working with the city attorney regarding the public records request and that map. I guess he'd be the one to make that work. Okay, that's it for the Citizens Forum. Onto consent calendar. These are items that are typically routine in nature. They're passed usually with one motion. Are there just any items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Okay, I have a card for 4.06. That is the resolution authorizing execution of lease agreements for space at the multi-service center with Abode Services, Access Health, and others. So, Ms. Cops?
So, I was wondering if you have the address to the multi-service center that Krill is based out of, because I want to make a donation in somebody's name. Her name is Allison. A little girl passed away, and she lived independently on Krill, and so I wanted to know what the address to the social services are.
I think Mr. Spence is looking that up. I will get that to you later.
Krill, okay. Okay, you don't have that handy?
I don't have the specific address right here, but I will...
Okay. And are all these services under one roof? Are they all at the, is it Pacific Avenue? Or is it all at Robertson Park? Are these all in the same building?
It's the multi-service center at Alum Pacific, the one right next door here.
Yeah. So, the address of the multi-service center itself is 3311 Pacific Avenue. Krill's corporate headquarters may be located in a different location, and that may be what you're looking for, but all of them rent space at the multi-service center.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for the consent calendar? Moved by Councilmember Warner.
Second.
Second of Vice Mayor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. No public hearings. So, moving on to matters of consideration, matters for consideration, 6.01 has been continued at the first meeting in January. 6.02, the discussion in direction regarding Livermore's participation in the Waste Management Authority's amended ordinance regarding carryout of reusable bags. Judy Erlinson, our Public Works Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the city council. In 2012, the Alameda County Waste Management Authority passed an ordinance to reduce the number of single-use bags and encourage the use of reusable bags. The Livermore City Council agreed to participate in the ordinance on February 13th, 2012. Currently, the ordinance imposes a minimum 10-cent per-bag fee for the purchase of paper bags and reusable bags, and applies to approximately 1,300 stores countywide. Since the ordinance took effect, stores are distributing less single-use bags at the point of sale, and fewer plastic bags have been found in storm drains. Despite the success, it is estimated that 300 million bags are still distributed in Alameda County by currently unregulated retail stores and restaurants. Therefore, on October 26th, 2016, the Alameda County Waste Management Authority approved an expansion to the ordinance to include an additional 9,000 retail stores beginning May 1st, 2017, and 4,000 restaurants beginning November 1st, 2017, countywide. The city of Livermore would be subject to the expanded ordinance unless the city council passes a resolution to opt out by December 9th, 2016. If the city council chooses to participate in the ordinance expansion, StopWaste staff would be responsible for outreach to affected businesses and would oversee complaint-based enforcement. Staff recommends that the city council take no action, thereby confirming participation in the expanded ordinance. Thank you for your consideration, and both city staff and StopWaste staff are available for any questions.
So, in other words, by not doing something, we're actually doing something?
That's right.
Okay. Is this government at its best, or what? Councilmember Turner.
So, this one was tricky. This is mine. I asked to bring it here, knowing that doing nothing did something, but wanted to, since it does affect so many of our businesses in town, just wanted to vet it across with you guys. I'm absolutely in support of it. We've got excellent data from StopWaste on the impact of the current plastic bag ban. If you've been out to the landfill lately, it's still problematic, but so much better than it was even after a windstorm. So, we're on the right path, and that's why StopWaste has decided to move forward in expanding the ban. So, frankly, I'd like you to do absolutely nothing.
So, do we take a motion on doing nothing?
If it failed, then you'd actually do something, so you wouldn't want to do that. So, essentially receiving the...
It's my mistake.
So, exactly.
You have to receive the report.
Yes. Yes. And obviously, if there's anyone, anybody who have any blue cards, and then...
Okay, I do.
Comments and receiving the...
Any questions or comments from the council? I do have a card, 6.02, Connie Cops.
I feel like such a busybody today. I, you know, I really have mixed feelings about this, and I have to, I don't know, I'll recuse myself in a way, because I had some intellectual property that actually was different. It's positive reinforcement. It's a little less, you know, Gestapo nanny, you know, do this, don't do this. I, you know, my husband and I disagree on this. He thinks it's really good to ban all bags. But, you know, there are times when those bags come in handy, and as a nurse, an educated nurse, you probably know they can work as tourniquets, they can work to separate a lot of, you know, germs, you know, they're a good barrier. So, I really have mixed feelings on this, and I have mixed feelings on some of the organizations, because I did in good faith approach a lot of these organizations, as well as other organizations in the waste industry and recycle industry, and I really was blazing a trail and getting a lot of blank stares. Again, my business model was actually a process that was patent pending, and there were some interesting complications, and I have petitioned those in charge of that stuff to, you know, maybe try to reopen it. And so, I have selfish motives, I'll admit that. But, on the other side of it, I think education is so important, and it's such the key to having a good society. California's done a lot with energy, and you've done a lot, you know, with like, just going ahead with whatever you think is right and good for the climate, you know, and for the atmospheric whatever, you know, keeping things nice and clean and good. But, we had to start making people want to just be good with their bags, make sure they're not going in the water, just be, you know, educating our people to be responsible with it, rather than putting all these, you know, all these rules and regulations and fines, and it's just almost Gestapo to me. And I really hope that you will consider that when you're doing it, you know, bags, they have their, you know, they're good for a lot of things. And so, and I would really like to talk to StopWaste.org, or StopWaste again. I don't know if they were the same conglomerate they were in 2005, 2006, when I outreach to them, but I would really, really, really like to see more of a positive reinforcement rather than a ban. And I would like to see more discussion before you opt in. Thank you. Or don't, whatever you're not doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Okay, I'm going to close that, well, the public comment. So, we just do nothing, and we do something. How easy is that? Okay, is that, any comments or questions? Okay, I have seen the difference in the last couple of years. I absolutely have seen the difference out in the landscape. Haven't seen nearly as many bags blown in the breeze, so it's obviously working. So, we will do nothing.
I have a member of StopWaste staff here, just going to have a question.
Questions for staff? Okay, thank you for coming out. It's great, I appreciate it. But, it looks like with the staff reporting the information that we've got, we have all the information we need. So, great, thank you very much. All right, moving on to 6.03, discussion in direction regarding the bicycle, pedestrian, and trails active transportation plan and our new commission.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the city council. Tonight, we will provide you with an update to the active transportation plan development process, including a summary of the existing conditions and needs analysis, and a review of draft plan, goals, and policies. Sorry about that. So, the project team includes city staff and a consultant group led by Alta Planning and Design. The team also includes a technical advisory committee comprised of internal and external agency staff, including police, park district, public works, and school district staff, who provide professional and practical perspective. We also work closely with a citizens advisory committee appointed by the council to provide community and resident perspective. As a little bit of background, the active transportation plan is an update to the city's existing bikeways and trails master plan. The master plan is instrumental and lays the foundation for implementing bikeway and trails projects throughout our community. However, a lot has happened since the master plan's adoption in 2001. Parts of the network have been constructed, land uses have changed, some land has been developed, the population has increased somewhat, and traffic patterns have also changed. The new active transportation plan will update the current conditions, evaluate the community's active transportation needs, and include a pedestrian component, which is absent from the current master plan. The active transportation plan will identify network and program recommendations over a 10-year period, set priorities, and identify potential funding sources. And the new plan will meet Alameda County Transportation Commission funding requirements and ensure the city remains eligible for competitive grant opportunities. So, now with that, I'd like to introduce Lisa Byer with Alta Planning and Design. She will tell us more about active transportation, the plan development, and the results of our existing conditions and needs analysis. And followed up, Debbie will close the presentation with discussion regarding the plan's goals and policies, after which all three of us will be available for questions.
Thanks, Andy. And thanks for having us talk about this. So, when we talk about active transportation, we're talking about non-motorized forms of transportation, so walking, biking, running, horseback riding. And this plan is going to identify projects and programs, as well as policies, that will really enhance the active transportation network here in Livermore. So, Livermore already has a great system of trails, and particularly trails, and a bike network to work with, but the idea here is to really take that existing network and fill some of the gaps, and increase safety and comfort in using that system. So, here are some of images of the biking and walking and trail network here in Livermore. And when we talk about biking facilities, we're talking about four classes. Class one being the shared-use path, those are the trails you're very familiar with here. Class two being bicycle lanes, striped lanes, and there are several across the city. Class three is a bicycle route or a shero. It's a shared lane with vehicular traffic. And class four is a cycle track, that's a separated bicycle lane by a physical barrier. When we talk about pedestrian facilities, we're talking about high-visibility crosswalks, we're talking about signals, we're looking at the opportunity for amenities like lighting and benches in the streetscape, as well as landscaping and buffers to traffic and transportation. Oops, this is going. And here's a little bit of what we're looking at in terms of trail facilities. So, this is how do we access the trails, and are they really providing services for all types of users, bicyclists, walkers, and horseback riding? So, an active transportation plan has six elements. We look at the existing conditions, so what is the current network and programs? We look at the plans and policies that are guiding development of that network. We assess the needs and try to understand what is missing. And then we look at goals and policies to frame that, and that's really what we're here today to talk to you about. Followed by the development of infrastructure and programmatic recommendations, prioritizing those, and identifying fund... those and identifying funding so that those can be implemented. And a huge part of developing this plan is engaging the public and the community. So, we introduced this project to the community in April at a public workshop. We talked about the existing conditions and some of the challenges and we will be returning to the public in January to start to talk about our initial recommendations. We also have a number of pop-up events that we've done in last summer as well as coming up in the kind of holiday season and we met with the planning commission to talk about the goals and policies in September and will return to them and we're here today to talk with you guys. We also did a community survey, so we reached out to the public in a number of ways through our public workshop and also online to get a bunch of input. This is kind of an overarching view of the schedule, so the project began last October, roughly a year ago. We spent the first period and into the spring developing the existing conditions, looking at the existing plans and policies. We had that public meeting in April and then we started to dig into the needs analysis. Those are the two pieces we're here to talk to you about as well as the goals and policies. And right now, in working towards our January meeting, we're working on developing those initial recommendations, both infrastructure improvements and programmatic. Then we'll layer that in with an implementation plan and then work towards the administrative draft and final plan to the end of next year. So, the first step in our process is to really look at what's out there, what the current active transportation conditions are, both in terms of the infrastructure and programs. And in Livermore, there's over 100 miles of class one, which are those shared use paths or trails, as well as class two, which are bike lanes. And 36 miles have been added since the 2001 plan. In terms of pedestrian facilities, we have over 80% of the street network, which is 550 miles of sidewalk and most of that is either at least one side, if not both sides of the street. In some cases, a trail is actually on the opposite side. So, here is a map of the existing and previously proposed bikeways and trail network that we looked at from, really updated from the 2001 master plan. And you can see that there's a great network when you combine both the blue lines, which are the bikeways, bike lanes, and the green lines, which are the trails. So, there's a great sort of network already there and there's some key gaps that we really want to look at in order to fill as we move forward. In terms of programs, this is another really important thing, you know, in addition to the built kind of infrastructure that's there, programs are a great way to increase awareness and educate people and add safety to the use of these facilities. So, there are a number of programs already underway. The Safe Routes to School program is very active here as well as bicycle patrol volunteers. And finally, we want to look at who the potential users are, so who they are and how they behave. And we can see here that there's a real opportunity to mode shift because there's very few that are actually using biking and walking to get to work. There's a higher percentage that are going to school that way, so this is a real opportunity to enhance and improve that usability. And finally, we, you know, reached out to the public in our April meeting as well as the online survey, which we got 500 responses to and I think there's two really key pieces of information there. One, people want to bike and walk more, so there's a desire to actually use and for a usable network. And two, we learned a little bit more about what the barriers are to biking and walking in Livermore. So, in terms of biking, the built infrastructure was one of the bigger challenges, so gaps in the network or sort of disconnected and lack of sort of dedicated amenities such as bike parking. In terms of walking, it was more a matter of convenience or lack of convenience, so not knowing the best way to get somewhere, not having enough time. And that's a real opportunity for programs to address. So, the needs analysis process looks at the existing demand and those, that comes from activity generators where people live, work, play, learn, and then the level of service for bicycle and pedestrian network. This map shows the composite demand, so it's all of the things that are activity generators, where people live, where they work, where they learn, where they play, where they're shopping and where they're accessing transit. And so, what you can see here, the darker colors, the red, deeper colors are the highest demand and then the blue are less demand and moving to gray with the least demand. But generally, Livermore is highly suburban, you know, residential communities are spread throughout. The Lawrence Livermore Lab and the Sandia Lab as well as Las Placitas College are all sort of at the periphery, at the edges. Schools and parks are spread evenly without, distributed evenly and the highest demand for shopping is seen in the downtown core and up in the northeast Livermore as well as the outlets. And the downtown core and Las Placitas College also have a high demand for transit access. So, that's what we're looking at here. The next piece is determining the level of stress in the bicycle network and then the level of service in the pedestrian network. And for both of these analyses, we're looking at the street configuration, the number of lanes, the posted speed, the presence or non-presence of a barrier or buffer between pedestrians, bicyclists and moving traffic. So, our bicycle analysis showed that the low-stress streets are mostly in the neighborhoods and once you get to the arterials, those are very high-stress networks and they're difficult to cross as well. There's really no low-stress networks to get all the way to Las Placitas or the labs right now and the arterials and collector streets are really just barriers across the city. Those are the straight routes that get us through. Some have bicycle facilities, most not buffered, so they're really like competing with traffic that's moving, you know, at high speeds, higher speeds. In terms of the pedestrian analysis, we see the same thing. The neighborhoods are well-defined and served, low-stress areas, but once you get to the arterials and collector streets, those crossings are difficult for pedestrians, so getting across and through town is difficult as well as in the downtown area.
And so, now we're gonna move on to the goals and policies for this and what we did is we started with the existing 2001 Bike and Trails Master Plan, looked at the goals and policies that were in that document and then we also considered best practices and other examples from other communities. We refined all of this and we developed a succinct set of aspirational goals and measurable policies to guide the development of future facilities and program recommendations. So, the goals and policies that I'm gonna talk through tonight, they reflect feedback both from the planning commission as well as our advisory committees that Andy discussed with you earlier, our citizens advisory committee, our technical advisory committee and then also city staff. So, in general, the draft goals are aspirations for the community and they represent the most important priorities of this community. The draft policies are going to direct the resources and actions with the intent of being able to measure progress as we move forward. We ended up with four goals and we organized them to focus on a safe and connected network with high-quality design and support for use of that network with education and enforcement while continually looking at and ensuring long-term comfort and safety, which is done through maintenance. So, getting into a little more of the specifics, the first goal, Safe and Comprehensive Network, this is about providing a complete network for active transportation with safe facilities that can be used for people of all ages and abilities. The second goal is about implementing current best practices in design of facilities and also the supports of facilities that are associated with those. So, that's the, to design for all users. The third goal is to expand the existing active transportation community through education, awareness and enforcement programs. So, this goal is more programmatic whereas the first two that I talked through were more focused on actual infrastructure. This is more goals of, for programs and such. And then the fourth goal, to maintain the active transportation network, this is where I was mentioning maintenance. So, this final goal is about ensuring a high-functioning and safe network through proper maintenance. So, we brought these goals and policies to the planning commission back in September and they provided positive feedback and comments for us at that meeting. Specifically, they asked to strengthen one of our policies related to maintenance and you'll see in this slide, the policy as it was written previously and the new revision that is before you tonight. They also, they expressed interest in closing gaps in the network before potentially creating new facilities and improving connections between those activity generators, which Lisa had mentioned. So, improving the connections between residential neighborhoods and the schools or shopping or jobs, those type of activity generators, so people can get from point A to point B and be on a safe network that is not, that you don't have the obstacles to cross that are the arterials and other roadways that might make some uncomfortable. They were also, the planning commission is also supportive of the outreach that we've done so far, both to bring awareness to this project, but also to gather feedback through the online surveys, online mapping that we did and the meetings that we've held so far and ask that we continue to conduct this process with active outreach and make sure that the community is a part of this process from the beginning to the end. So, the next steps for this is for us to develop some recommended projects, programs and policies and we've been working on that for a bit after we did the community outreach and then we'll be prioritizing and creating a financial plan for the projects and programs. So, each phase thus far has included outreach and we will continue to do so as we're moving forward in the next number of months. We expect to have a first draft of a plan in early 2017 and we'll take that draft plan to our advisory committees, both the technical advisory committee and the citizens advisory committee and out to the public to get feedback. We expect to have a final plan to present to planning commission and the city council in fall of 2017, but our next immediate step is we are actually hosting a community open house, January 26th, to look at the draft recommendations and to get feedback from those at that point in time. And with that, that wraps up our presentation for the evening and pleased to have an opportunity to provide you with this overview and open this up for questions or comments.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Warner.
I think this seems very comprehensive and very supportive. But one suggestion or question is how do we compare with other cities similar to us in terms of safety and usage? And I'm also interested in that as part of your plan here, you have a way of sampling that and showing us trends over time and there may be some other key statistics of, you know, just how do, how's the community using these facilities and how's, how safe is it?
So, thank you. So, one of the things that we have done in our, in our research on the existing conditions is look at Livermore in comparison to nearby communities and also the county overall. So, in some senses, Livermore is at a lower rate of use of active transportation facilities, but these are very small. We're looking at, you know, 2% versus 2.5%. So, you know, if you look at it in the larger picture, Livermore is very much in line with your neighbors and as you may know, Pleasanton is also working on a bike plan and pedestrian plan and active transportation plan. So, I think that the opportunity to improve is, and to engage a larger active transportation community is possible and I think that what we have to do is look a little bit further out to other communities across the country to see that, those numbers. And so, we have, we have looked at those things and I think there are a number of cities that through infrastructure development have actually increased their, one, their use and two, through infrastructure development have been able to reduce the rate of injuries.
So, and you just brought up something and to what extent are we cooperating with Pleasanton and Dublin and where is that in here?
So, our technical advisory committee includes representatives from the city of Dublin, Pleasanton, Alameda County and other jurisdictions, so they are part of our Active Transportation Plan and then also the staff member who is, the staff members who are on our Active Transportation Plan are the ones that are working through the process in their community. So, we are constantly sharing information back and forth between the jurisdictions and Alameda County.
And not just sharing the information, but planning a larger circulation pattern, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, please, Ms. McGee.
So, I asked of the, in backup, first of all, I agree with broadly the goals and objectives and the priorities, both on maintenance and to connect what we have before we expand or create more missing links that go nowhere for future build. But question back to the county and the regional parks generators, this is still largely a suburban commuter community. Absent the two national laboratory employees who we all see on biking to work, bless their hearts, you're not gonna appreciably get 10,000 people in Livermore in the near term to bike to work. But what Livermore is a heavy user of, speaking of one who uses it daily when I'm not away on business, is the Valley Trail System for all forms of exercise and we've got some marvelous regional parks right at our edges and if you brought your composite demand back up and would you bring that up for a minute? I want to just point out that I hope regionally, evenings, summertime, weekends, you've got all of us that live here who are frankly not going to passively or actively exercise as much in the urban core as we're gonna get out to those edge amenities. I'd like to see the map expanded to include the missing link connection, the city manager knows this is my pet peeve, down Arroyo Road to not just Wintie's complex, but to the Del Valle Dam complex. I can't tell you how many cyclists won't go west through Sycamore back to the Del Valle Regional Complex when they just go right down Wintie, excuse me, Arroyo with no bike lanes. You've also got, and I know you have a member, an appointed member on the committee who's a bicycle shop owner, heavy traffic out to Tesla and South Mines. Well, the current bike path system ends at South Mines. Could we eventually bikeway path at least to Greenville so people that are living in the community that want to use an outer edge loop aren't chasing, being chased by cars on Tesla? Certainly, a Century cyclist who wants to go clear to Tracy at some point is gonna endure country roads, but we've got some missing links on our southern city boundaries and the third regional park that a lot of us forget is Brushy Peak and a lot of people like to walk or cycle up to Brushy Peak, but once you leave the developed edges of Springtown, you're out playing bumper car again if you want to ride or walk to Brushy Peak. We've got the marvelous new Stanley Trail connection to Shadow Cliffs. So, I just, I'd like to see some expanded thinking between the city, the county and LARPD. Let's get those edge active generators and maybe those are some of the earlier missing links. I bet you would pick up more evening and weekend volume of use rather than just a smattering of employees or students going to school, 15 minutes each way a day. Just my five cents worth. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
I agree full-heartedly with everything that you just heard and I think that's the bigger picture, as well as I just wanted to put another plug. I've brought this up several times and I'm hopeful still, I just want to make sure with our major BB funds, we are going to complete the Iron Horse Trail to Vasco, yes? Because I would ride that to Bart and riding my bike on Portola is not fun. So, I believe that's in plan still? Yeah. Okay, if not, but yeah, and then everything that has already been said. I think that in Livermore, we're gonna not, you know, get a whole lot of people that are gonna bike to work. We get some, but the bigger use in Livermore is gonna be recreational biking and getting folks, you know, from, and then eventually out to Duelin Canyon at some point, but for now, really focusing on Shadow Cliffs, Brushy Peak, the backside of the dam. God, if we had a bike lane out there, that'd be awesome. So, certainly completing and I know Ann Quees Camp would be happy to hear all of that and work with us as well, so I agree.
Very good. It's hard to believe it's been a year, over a year and I remember when we empaneled that ATPEC, I was amazed at the caliber of talent that we had on that committee. It was, it was pretty amazing. So, I expected great things and we've gotten great things. So I expected great things, and we've gotten great things. As you brought it out, the, being a member of the Alameda County Transportation Committee, Commission, that conduits a lot of this flowing through, obviously the goal is to create a comprehensive strategy for the movement of people by a variety of different modes. And you've talked about them here, bringing together the safe streets and the safe routes to schools. And I'm going to be going back to DC in January, and we're going to be talking about getting grants to complete these connections to the Iron Horse Trail. So we're still working on that. Talking about connecting gaps, First East Street to Springtown. I mean, that's just, you know, people just kind of close their eyes and hope as they go over that one. It's, it's one of those big gaps that we have. With regards to the goals, these have been brought up before. Obviously, we're using a lot of different social media platforms, we're using the workshops and getting people together, and it's great. And, you know, getting the word out through bike shops, running clubs, cycling clubs. We've got a lot of cycling clubs around here. And also, as the Vice Mayor pointed out, partnering with the other agencies, for example, LARP, because we share trails, and we each have, we own different parts of trails. And so how do we coordinate the addition of the amenities to support cycling and hiking and walking as we move along? So there's obviously opportunities to cooperate and collaborate to make sure that we can encourage people with the proper amenities to do more walking and cycling. So that's great. A lot of good information there. So that's, we received the report, I take it, and you've gotten sufficient direction or comments? Okay, so do we need a motion to receive?
You do not. We will take your oral comments as direction and general acceptance of the goals and policies that were listed before you, with special attention to at least examine the items that you brought up. We will go ahead and do that, and you'll see these when they're back to you for their next review. At that time, there'll be a formal action.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, 701, matters initiated. Okay. Some comments? Councilmember Turner.
I have nothing to report.
How much of slackers up here? Don't ask all the time.
Ditto, ditto. Go ahead, fill the time.
Don't fill the time.
Okay, well, let's see, October 26th, we had the Mayor's Summit, and really, it was moderated by Catherine Baker. We had all five mayors of the tri valley there, and really the focus of the whole summit became the inter-regional collaboration that we had, which is really quite remarkable for any region, the fact that we've got five cities working together really is extraordinary. On the 27th, we had the ACTC Board Meeting. On November 2nd and 3rd, I attended the US Congress of Mayors, Mayor's Water Council. We talked about a lot of the private-public partnerships that are presenting opportunities to provide infrastructure and to leverage funds to, because everybody's dealing with the same crisis, that you don't have enough money to fund the infrastructure. Also, this was really cool. There was a dedication of a tiny library at Charlotte and Jacqueline. There were three Girl Scouts, middle-school Girl Scouts, Shelby Bowman, Jamie Helm, and Grace Baker from Troop 30310. And they built this little library. It's about, oh, yay, big. And they poured a little pad, and it's right on the corner. And they, recognizing some of the city's initiatives, they stocked it with books against bullying. So the, these Girl Scouts built it, and we had the dedication for that. And that was, it was just a lot of fun, giving back to the community and taking the initiative to create this library to promote literacy and to fight bullying. On November 7th, we had a LAFCO special meeting in San Leandro, gaining public input on the in Township Healthcare District. There's been a request by the state to dissolve that, so we wanted to get additional information. We also had a meeting the previous month. On November 9th, the Altamont Regional Rail Group came together, and we had an update on the transit-oriented development plans for the Isabel Station area, and also an update on the infrastructure, bringing Bart down to ACE. Also, the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, we had a presentation by the local agency formation commission. It's amazing how many people don't know what LAFCO is or does. I'm not going to go there. But there are actually people that are on the commission that don't know what LAFCO does. So just kind of an update for the mayors. The 10th, there was an East Bay Economic Development Alliance workshop, and where the consul generals from 11 different countries came together to talk about trade over in Oakland. And today, we had an Alameda County Transportation Commission, the I-580 Express meeting, there were, the express lanes are 31,000 trips a day. They have had over 4.6 million trips since January. 57% of the cars are paying tolls, the other ones are carpooling, which is really what we want to do, to get the cars off the road. And total revenue is about $5 million, revenue over expenses about $2 million. And all those dollars stay within that transit corridor. And the Planning Policy and Legislative Committee, there are four new self-help counties like Alameda County because they passed transportation taxes, Monterey, Stanislaus, Merced, and Santa Cruz. Unfortunately, it looks like there will be no action from any special session on transportation this year in the Assembly. And the countercost of transit measures similar to BB here failed. So once again, Alameda County is leading the way. So with that, we-
Mr. Marshand, may I?
Yes.
Just like to draw one-
Before I do something-
To the council's attention, we do have the unofficial results from the Secretary of State, excuse me, on Proposition 64. That's the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. We have not had a chance to discuss the city's response to that, if you wanted to consider any items relative to local control. There are a couple of things we can do with regard to cultivation, if you wanted to consider that. That's something that takes place immediately. There's also some issues with regard to commercial sales. That'll take place in a longer timeframe. Those regulations will not be in place at the state level until January 2018. Now, we are already set to return to you at your meeting on December 12th with regard to outline of regulations and public outreach for medicinal marijuana dispensaries. I just want to inquire if there's any desire for us to bring back to you at the same time any information on the Adult Use of Marijuana Act and your potential regulations? If so, we can bring it back at the same time.
It's the pleasure of the council.
It was the pleasure of the council, actually going on it while I was still sitting. I thought it was going to happen in November, but since I will no longer be here, I don't be here.
Okay. Well, shall we then leave that to-
I think we're deep into it, and out of respect to the change in council, whatever we were to do the end of November, half a meeting in December, doesn't entertain a conversation with the new council members. So I think it's staff's obligation and the remaining members of the council to bring the new members up to speed and go forward on hopefully just medical marijuana dispensing, which was the direction of this council, and get them up to speed and let them embrace and hopefully support a regulatory framework that works for Livermore.
Heads nodding? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. So with that, a journey to a, well, first off, we'll be journeying to a closed session.
That is correct.
And then after the closed session, we will reconvene to a regular City Council meeting Monday, November 24th. Meeting adjourned.